Okay, I'd like to call the meeting of the Urbana City Council to order. Would the clerk please call the roll? Mr. Ammons?
Here.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Jacobson?
Here.
Mr. Madigan?
Here.
Ms. Marlin?
Here.
Mr. Roberts?
Here.
Mr. Smythe?
Here electronically.
Mayor Pressing?
Here.
The first item is the approval of the minutes of the previous meeting, January 17th, 2017.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Roberts made the motion, seconded by Aaron Ammons. Any additions or corrections? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? That motion carries. Next, we have petitions and communications. If anybody would like to address the Urbana City Council, there's a little form to fill out, which you can hand to the clerk. Oh, sorry. Mr. Ammons pointed out, "I skipped additions to the agenda." Sorry about that. Are there any additions to the agenda? Don't see any. Okay, we'll go on. First person on petitions and communications, Esther Pat.
Hi, I'm Esther Pat, 706 South Kohler. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I came here tonight because in the discussion about the police hiring more police officers in the last few weeks, a number of people have been talking about what is the city of Urbana doing to address racial disparities in traffic stops? And in all the discussion at last week's meeting, no one answered the question. So I came here to answer the question for the public and to remind all of you and thank you of actually what you have done so far to address racial disparities. First, when people came to you with the Department of Transportation data saying, "Hey, Urbana isn't it better than everybody else in this area? Do something," the city council passed a resolution directing the creation of a study. And the mayor directed staff on the police department and the human rights officer to work with the Human Relations Commission to create a study, to create the study that you did get, which was a very good report with data and analysis and recommendations. I will mention, I am a member of the Champaign County Racial Justice Task Force. I am not speaking for the task force. I'm just here as a person. I just want to tell you, by comparison, what we've got over there is the no staff support whatsoever. In fact, the task force, since January, the beginning of January, had to look for its own meeting space. So, thank you for responding to the public and doing the study. There are also five more things that you did, and I'll just end it. The most important one of them, I think, is the one that got no press attention, which I think is really the direction you need to keep looking at. First, you hired a statistician so that you can both get more data to figure out how to address the problem and monitor whether the changes you make are actually working. You authorized the hiring of an outreach worker, and you made three ordinance changes. The one that got all the press was that you lowered the fine for possession of small amounts of marijuana to $25. Then you lowered the fine for possession of paraphernalia, also, I think that was to 25. And then, what I think was the most important change was that you increased the amount of time for people to pay any municipal fine from two weeks to two months. I wish you'd made it longer, but thank you for doing that, because in the whole question of racial disparity, one thing that is more, I mean, it's evident, and what we're doing at the county, I'm seeing more and more evidence, is that economic disparity is a big part of racial disparity in policing, just like it is in education, just like it is in housing, just like it is everywhere. And more than a century of deliberate action to suppress the African-American population economically, you know, certainly is not something that got eliminated just with passage of the Civil Rights Act. And so, when you look at questions, you really need to look at what, how is it that income affects not just how people are treated, like with traffic stops, but outcomes as well? I also want to share with you just two other perspectives I have, and this is part of what motivated me to come here, is in trying to figure out for the county about over-incarceration and how to change the disproportion of, the gross disproportion of representation of African-American people in the jail system, finding three things. One is the economic disparity. Another is, some of the really most important reforms that need to be made have to be state legislation. Now, you can advocate for changes in state legislation, and I think that's, and some of that's beginning to happen, but you really need to look at that. And the third thing is, and this is why, for the people who, people who are critical, I just want to say, I think you're doing a good job. You just have to keep at it. It is not easy to identify when, exactly what is causing different, I mean, some things are obvious, but some things, like I'm looking at people, all the people in jail on suspended, driving on suspended licenses. It's a real, the more questions I ask, the more complex it is. And I think what you need to do is not try to look at the whole thing as one thing, or you're not going to get anywhere. You have to just keep breaking it down and looking, and what you did weren't the five most important, or the six most important things. You did the six things that you could, one, figure out, and two, are within your power.
You have one minute, Ms. Pat.
Thank you. And I'd like to just continue in that way, and just accept the reality that there's a lot that's not in your power, and the real solutions actually aren't in your power. But there are very good solutions that you can come up with, just more of the same of what you're doing, if you try to break it down on what can you figure out and what can you, and what is within your power. So, thank you for what you've been doing, and just keep at it. Don't be discouraged because you can't eradicate poverty or eradicate racism, you know, society-wide. You can get at things that hurt people, and you can get at things that cause more disparity if you just keep looking. And that report had a lot of good recommendations. I suggest you just go through them one at a time and figure out, "What can we do with this?" And try to tackle them, and know it's going to take some time, but just keep at it. Thank you.
Thank you. Bishop King James and Reverend Evelyn B. Underwood do not wish to speak, but they ask that their position be entered into the record, that they are continually concerned about the Dr. Ellis subdivision sewer problem. And I have Dean Hazen, who's going to speak at the time of the discussion on hiring the police officers. I would like to say something here. I got a note from Teresa in the Finance Department. She got a check for $250 from somebody who felt very guilty. They wrote a note and they said, now, I guess it was, $500, a money order. "In the late 1980s, I was part of a group which took a traffic signal that was lying on the ground behind a city building. I apologize and want to reimburse the city for my actions." So whoever you are out there, thank you.
Really cool.
Okay.
This is such a feel-good evening.
Yes, right. Okay, so then we have, we don't have any unfinished business that we're going to deal with unless somebody wants to mention something. But we'll go to reports of standing committees. Charlie's not here, so I understand Diane's going to do the report of the committee of the whole.
Yes. On behalf of the committee of the whole, I move approval of Resolution Number 2017-01-001R, Resolution in favor of sustainable funding for 911 systems. Mayor, did you want to speak to this?
Yes, I do.
And I'll second that before.
I'll second that.
Okay, I think we have a motion by Marlin, seconded by Roberts. Who spoke first? Mr. Smythe?
Yes, I just want to point out that I am here electronically.
Okay. We'd rather have you here in person, but, you know, we're doing the best we can here. So anyway, I did condense it to make it shorter. I think it's important to put the history in, but I do have some good news. The MetCad Committee was told, we met last week, you know, the city of Champaign did lower the annual increases. They smoothed it out over the whole period when they're going to acquire the equipment that they need. So instead of having a 13% annual increase at the beginning, and then lowering it to, lower than that at the end, they smoothed it to be 6% a year. And for next year, they're actually lowering it to 5%. So everybody on the MetCad Board is very happy. And we also met with our legislators and discussed a number of topics. We had five legislators there, but one of them was the 911 funding. And I've been talking with Carol Ammons for quite a long time about this, so she, she really knows the whole situation. And the rest of them were very willing to help. So that was good news. So I hope I've made the revisions that make you happy. We want happiness here. Okay, any other comments? All right. Beg your pardon? Okay. Would the clerk please call the roll? Mr. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yeah.
That motion carries. Thank you very much. Diane?
On behalf of the committee, I move approval of ordinance Number 2017-01-003, an ordinance revising the annual budget ordinance for fiscal year 2016-17. This is for two police officer positions and crime mapping software.
I'll second.
Okay, motion by Marlin, seconded by Roberts, and Dean Hazen would like to comment on this.
Good evening. Dean Hazen, 306 North Barringer Circle. For those of you that don't know me, I spent the last 15 years working for the Urbana Police Department. Most of that time, I was assigned to Southeast Urbana. A lot of that because that's where I enjoyed working. Those are where the majority of the mental health crisis calls come from, due to some of the housing there. And when it comes up to the two police officers, I'm probably going to be very short with my spiel, but I want to assure you that, well, let me back up a second and say that I've worked for multiple police departments in different jurisdictions before I came to Urbana. And Urbana is by far run the most efficiently that I've ever seen. They are squeezing the most that they can possibly get out of their resources. And they really need the officers. We may have 55 on paper, but that's not, not reality on the street. There's too many variables, too many things come up, and they're often run short, working 16 hours or more. And I don't think that it's to anybody's benefit to have a police department full of officers that are overworked and burnout, especially with what they're facing today. So I just wanted to tell you that as an experienced employee of this department, that I support it fully, and I hope that everybody votes for it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anybody else want to make a comment? Okay, Mr. Jacobson?
So I'll just say, for the public record, something that I emailed to all of you earlier, and that is that I've invited a presentation from the Joint Mental Health and Public Safety Pilot Project to, which is funded by the Justice Department, is being implemented by Champaign County, and will be making some recommendations for how to interface mental health and public safety. And I'll be, you know, also combining that with a resolution for us to really focus on that as our next initiative in public safety, that that's really where we need to, we need to go. And I'll just point out again, for the public record, that the one area, when we looked at the police activity reports from 2011 to 2016, there's only one area where we've seen, year after year after year, a steady increase in the need for, in police calls, and that is in the area, in the mental health area. So I'm looking forward, you know, once we have done this addition to the police force, I'm really looking forward to explicitly focusing on the mental health and public safety interface as the next step.
Okay, anyone else?
If I could just say, real quickly, Charlie here. I agree with, both with what Dean has just said, and I support Eric's keeping us focused also on the mental health issues, because I think, like I said a number of times, we missed the, we missed our chance three years ago to tackle the mental health issue, and I've wanted to get back to it ever since. I appreciate Eric's work on this as well. Thank you.
Okay. Bill Brown?
Yeah, thanks, Dean, for saying that. I've heard that actually from other officers, both in Urbana's force and from other officers in town, from U of I, that Urbana seems to be busier than their departments. So that's one of the main things that has helped me reach a decision on this, that, plus thinking about all the extra training we're requiring, some of the voluntary, somewhat voluntary training for the crisis intervention teams. It just makes sense with that much extra training, the amount of time that they're spending on crisis intervention calls, that we would need more officers. I did look up, the data actually hasn't been too helpful, as far as crime rates and the calls for services, and even these number of officer ratios. I know that's been kind of one of the things people have talked about most. Urbana's 1.3 officers per thousand residents, and it's one of the lowest, it is the lowest of the ones we were shown of other cities similar size in Illinois. I did look up some others from Big Ten universities, which are pretty similar. Bloomington, Indiana is 1.2, State College, Pennsylvania is 1.07, East Lansing, Michigan is 1.13, so, and three others, or two others there, less. Ann Arbor, Michigan is .99. They have 117 officers for 118,000 people. So I don't think that officer ratio alone was really a deciding factor, nor any of the other statistics. I think it's really just based on what we hear from the police department and our knowledge of what kind of training's been required, as far as my decision on this.
Okay, anyone else? Eric?
I was very influenced by the testimony of the police department spouses. My wife often gets, has a better read of what's going on with me than I do, so I thought that was really important.
Aaron?
So, a couple of things. I do think it's important to point out some of the things that were laid out earlier by Esther Pat, and some of the things that I saw in the memo that was sent out by the chief a few months ago about training and things like that. I would like to get some more in-depth answers as it relates to exactly where this training is taking place and when it's taking place for more professional stops or for implicit bias. I think those are really important pieces that, from a training perspective, it may take a little bit of time for us to see exactly what that impact would be, from an implicit bias standpoint or professional stops. And, you know, I was one of the more outspoken people. Of course, they only vote against the tasers when it came down, and it hasn't been an issue at this particular point. So I do think there's some things that are very clearly positive about what our police department is doing. And so I think that's a very good thing for us in the city of Urbana. And although I might get a bad rap, or some folks might think I'm anti-police, you know, I don't think you'll find me ever taking a position that we shouldn't have any police. So, with that said, like I said, I'd like to find out a little bit more on who's doing the implicit bias training, and are we still, you know, how often does that take place? I also think that, you know, as the society has changed, what we are asking for, asking our police officers to do, has changed. The crisis intervention's training is super important. I think that's something that we should be looking at to help make sure that we are funding that appropriately because of the interactions with people who are mentally ill and things like that. The major concerns that I have about this proposal, one is the timing from a fiduciary standpoint. And I had a few questions, some were pretty simple. As I looked at the memo from the mayor, it said that, for instance, a physical, and I'm just trying to get some clarity on this, really, it's like a $3,120 for a physical. That's a pretty special physical. What, why does it cost so much for our officers to have a physical?
I should say it because it's done at Carl, but I won't.
But you just did.
That's, I mean, we do try to get the best rate that we can, so I guess it's pretty comprehensive. I think our Finance Director has a comment on this.
Yeah, I actually worked with our deputy chief to come up with those numbers. And it is a very comprehensive physical, and depending on what's found in the initial physical, they may order additional tests, so that reflects the, you know, the maximum cost. Sometimes it will be less, but we need to plan for what it may cost.
So it doesn't always cost $3,000?
No, sometimes it may be less, depending on what additional test the physician orders.
Okay. So the other thing, and while you're sitting there, I guess I might as well continue with, along this vein. So the officers would be basically $96,000 a year once they are onboard. And then, we did hire the statistician. Is that, that's public information as to what the cost, what the salary is for the statistician?
Sure, I don't remember off the top of my head, but it's in the budget.
And then, of course, the position for the outreach was also added. So we're talking about somewhere around $325,000 that's going to be added to the rolls recurring next year. And it's coming, like, in the middle of the year, in the middle of a fiscal year, basically, with a looming shortfall of about $500,000 possible, right? So to me, I just don't think, that's like $822,000 of next year's budget that we could be missing. And so I didn't agree that $200,000 was de minimis, and I definitely don't think $800,000 is de minimis. So I don't understand why we would want to push something like this at this particular point, right? When, I don't know, it could have been done six months ago, or it could be done six months from now. We could have that particular conversation from a budgetary standpoint. So I would find it grossly irresponsible for me, as a fiduciary of the taxpayers' dollars, to put us in a situation, moving forward, that we have to pay this recurring cost without taking into consideration the Carl decision, the shortfall that's looming, and the possibility of having to lay off people. And that doesn't set right with me, because I think all of our departments should be adequately staffed. So to say that we're going to staff the police department, and the statistician went to the police department, you can say that the police liaison is not really in the police department, but it's still a liaison, and to add two officers, you know, that's a lot of money going to one particular department. So that's some of my concerns that I have around the budget part of this. And I don't think that what's being offered thus far clearly identifies exactly where this money's going to come from. So that's one of the, that's, that's part of the reason why I have a concern around the budget. One of the other things that Esther raised was about this conversation that we had for, an extensive conversation around racial profiling. And what we found is that what she proposed didn't have a timeline associated with it. So it seems as though, based upon her testimony, that somebody from the African-American community came up and said, "Hey, this is a problem, do something about it." And the council said, "Yeah, you're right, let's, let's jump right on it." And that nothing could be further from the truth. People were complaining about this for years and years and years. CU citizens, Martell Miller, folks have been coming in here for years talking about the overpolicing taking place in the black community. So to say that it just was like some immediate response would be disingenuous. And so one of the issues that came up in the conversation was body cameras. There was a conversation at one time, and they were brushed aside, sort of swept under the rug, due to the expense, primarily the storage cost of the footage. And I think this $200,000 that we're talking about now could go a long way towards addressing that particular issue. If I'm not mistaken, I think it was, and I could be way off, somewhere around $500,000 of a cost, a one-time cost to get the cloud and to be able to store all of the materials. So that conversation was brushed aside, and we left that conversation because we didn't have the money. So body-on cameras would also help alleviate many of the concerns from the public and assist our officers in telling their side of the story, when the video footage puts to rest any perceived bias or abuse that is being alleged. So our request was made to have our chief of police, the head of that department, to offer a comprehensive proposal to the council and mayor and the public on how he plans to lead the department in addressing the racial disparity in traffic stops. So for a point of clarity, we've heard on numerous occasions, when I raise this point, that the police are stopping more black people because they're in that area, or something like that. Well, the traffic stop racial disparities we are speaking of do not, I say again, do not, or not supposed to include stops of a vehicle linked to a specific crime. So when, whether it's one of my council members, or colleagues, or someone in the public, suggests that the reason why black folks are getting stopped more is because it's linked to the forced shootings or the high crime, well, the data that is self-reported by the Urbana Police Department shouldn't have anything to do with that. It should not include that data at all. So that's important to note, because I consistently hear these comments about the crime rate and the four murders that happened in Urbana in 2016. So the numbers we see are reflective of a pattern of policing and traffic enforcement by the UPD that has resulted in a tremendous negative economic impact, as we heard Esther Pat speak to, on African-Americans who are collectively some of the lowest earners in Urbana and Champaign County. And equally as important is the police community relations, because according to what the mayor has shared and the council has agreed to, the disparity that the black community has experienced for at least a decade or more is not fair, and it is not just. And in a memo we had not to, back in August of 2016, it was provided to us by the mayor, and it said, "The number one issue nationally in police-community relations is fairness and justice." So, again, this is not fair, and it is not just. So, a community that is, a community that is distrusting or suspicious of its police department is not inclined to be cooperative, understanding, or appreciative of the dangerous work that our officers have to do. My request that our department, in particular the chief of police, make a comprehensive proposal that speaks to the unfair and unjust treatment of our African-American driving population is indeed reasonable and in the best interest of all of our citizens. So to just quickly summarize, no proposal really to address the actual reason for these stops. The body cameras that we wanted, that we said, that the police officers, and the chief said that he was fine with, we just couldn't afford it. Now we found a way to pay $200,000 for officers with a plan to hire three more, which would be about $500,000. And where goes the request, this thing that Esther Pat was saying, that we're responsive to the cry in the community? Where goes the request for the body cameras? Where's the money? We just found it for the five officers, but when the community asks for the body cameras for transparency, we don't have the money. So our concerns continue to go unaddressed. Now I do, again, I want to reiterate, I think it's great that we're doing the implicit bias training, the professional stops training. I think all those things are wonderful, because that applies, and that's going to help everybody in the community. But to say that the issue that we wanted to see happen, to take place, is not going to happen, because we don't have the funds, but then turn around and hire officers for the same amount of money or more, I think that's, that sends a signal, a clear message to our community that that issue just isn't that important to us. So just wanted to make those comments, and I'll leave it at that.
Okay, anyone else? Would the clerk please call the roll? Mr. Ammons?
No.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yeah.
Mayor Pressing?
Yes.
That motion carries. Diane?
On behalf of the committee of the whole, I understand the petitioner and staff has asked that we keep the next item in committee. So I would move that we keep ordinance Number 2017-01-004, which was the ordinance disconnecting certain territory from the city of Urbana, 2209 East Perkins Road.
Second.
Motion by Marlin, seconded by Smythe. Any discussion? Oh, maybe you don't have discussion.
Yeah, maybe you don't.
Okay. Charlie, he's far away. Go ahead, Dennis.
Well, this was a topic that came up at our last meeting. The petitioner was interested in withdrawing his property from the city's boundaries. He didn't want to be added to the existing boundaries. And under consideration of his situation, where staff is going to be discussing whether if we agree to do that with him, he'll make an agreement to come into the city at a future date. So that seems to be like a compromise, and I was concerned about setting a precedent of exiting the city, or not following through on agreements that the city had made historically. of exiting the city, or not following through on agreements that the city had made historically with the property, but perhaps this compromise can be worked out, and we'll see this again at a future meeting.
Okay, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Diane?
Next up is ordinance number 2017-01-005. I move approval, on behalf of the committee, ordinance approving a redevelopment agreement with D and E Enterprises, 136 Main Street, it's the Cohen Building.
I'd like to second that one.
Okay, motion by Marlin, seconded by Roberts, any discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yeah.
That motion carries.
On behalf of the committee of the whole, I move resolution number 2017-01-004-R, resolution for improvement by municipality under the Illinois Highway Code for North Lincoln Avenue Improvements, Construction, Engineering, and Utilities.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Motion by Marlin, seconded by Roberts, any discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Before I do, I have a question.
Okay.
Did we skip one, ordinance 2017-01-005? Are you doing resolution?
We just did, we sent the 004 back to the committee, and we just approved 005 in the previous roll call. And now, we're on resolution 004.
Okay, then I've got something.
Okay.
Wrong here, okay? All right, now we go forward. Mr. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yeah.
That motion carries.
On behalf of the committee of the whole, I move resolution number 2017-01-005-R, resolution for local public agency amendment number one for federal participation, North Lincoln Avenue Improvement, Construction, Engineering, and Utilities.
Second.
Motion by Marlin, seconded by Smythe, any discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yeah.
That motion carries.
On behalf of the committee of the whole, I move approval of resolution number 2017-01-006-R, resolution approving a master intergovernmental cooperative purchasing agreement with U.S. Communities Government Purchasing Alliance.
Second.
Okay, motion by Marlin, seconded by Madigan, any discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yeah.
That motion carries.
And the last item, on behalf of the committee, I move resolution number 2017-01-007-R, resolution approving a cooperative purchasing agreement with National Joint Powers Alliance.
Second.
Motion by Marlin, seconded by Madigan, any discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yeah.
That motion carries. Okay, thank you. Reports of special committees? I don't think we have any. Reports of officers? Libby Tyler, Community Development.
Good evening. I have some announcements of events I want to bring to your attention. On your desk is an announcement for an upcoming workshop for contractors. We actually have a couple of these coming up, but for different purposes. And this will be focusing on general contractors who might be particularly interested in working on our housing rehabilitation programs. We are putting this together with the City of Champaign, Village of Rantoul, and the county, and that will be Friday, February 24th, 7:30 a.m., at the El Toro on Springfield in Champaign. So, spread the word, and we'll get that posted on our website as well. Also, coming up, if you've got a free Saturday morning, February 18th, and you're interested in the Curtis Road Corridor Study, which is a transportation study that we're preparing for the east-west corridor south of Urbana, along with the Regional Planning Commission, a lot of other partners. There will be a public workshop from 8:30 to 11:00 a.m., Saturday, February 18th. It will be at the Church of Christ, 2601 Philo Road, that's at the northwest corner of Philo and Windsor. And we'll be looking at infrastructure improvements for Curtis Road to facilitate mobility in this general area. And it does ask for an RSVP, and that's really just to make sure that there's some coffee and snacks. But hopefully, you can reserve, but if not, please do attend any or a part of this public workshop, February 18th, 8:30 to 11:00, Church of Christ. Any questions?
Yeah.
Dennis Roberts.
Is that the second workshop on this topic? Yes, because there was one last month, I think there was, at the same location.
Yeah, and I know they've made a lot of progress on goals and objectives, and hopefully, they'll have a presentation to tell us what they've learned from the public input in the meanwhile.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Libby. Any other reports of officers? Dennis?
I'm not an officer, but I didn't want to, I didn't want to have the evening end without commenting. I attended the Imbiob Urbana First Friday Activities downtown this weekend. I was so impressed by the turnout. Most of the venues were crowded with individuals who were enjoying the music, the activities, the creative arts, and just the fun of First Friday in Urbana. And so, hats off to the Imbiob Urbana Committee, who put this on, and I'll certainly be excited to watch social media the next time this takes place in March.
I'm not an officer, I have a report also, so to speak. On February 18th also, but it's in the afternoon, POP Ed, a job training and strategic thinking workshop, will take place at the Urbana-Champaign Independent Media Center. So, that's Saturday, February 18th, from 1:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m. This workshop will provide people with the basic, with the basics of critical thinking skills for rethinking social problems and navigating everyday life. Attendees will learn appropriate, excuse me, attendees will learn approaches to compete in the job market and change their working conditions. It's co-sponsored by Decolonize All the Things, North End Men's Breakfast Club, and UIUC Graduate Employees Organization, better known as GEO. So, that's Saturday, February 18th, at 1:00 p.m. at the Champaign Independent Media Center.
Okay. We did have a meeting with our local legislators on January 31st. We had Senator Chapin Rose, Senator Scott Bennett, Representative Carol Ammons, Representative Chad Hayes, and Representative Brad Halbrook. And the city of Urbana, the city of Champaign, the village of Savoy, Champaign County, the village of Rantoul, and the village of Mohammed all met. And the issues that we discussed were increased funding for 911, lack of a state budget, the impact on county government, the reform of binding arbitration, state assistance to Kirby Avenue Interstate 57 overpass, that was the city of Champaign, and the Department of Revenue Software, cutting the income tax to local government. The legislators were really alarmed about that one. And home rule for municipalities, that was an issue for Savoy. And finally, keeping the Police Training Institute at the U of I. So, it was a very good meeting, and I think both sides really learned a lot from each other, so that was good. Anyone else? Okay, next on the agenda, we have new business. We have resolution number 2017-02-008-R, a resolution of protest against a proposed map amendment to the Champaign County zoning map. And this is a request to rezone four parcels totaling thirty-five point one-five acres at 1413 East Old Church Road, from County Ag 1 to County Ag 2.
Good evening. So, the following is a request by Abigail Frank, Amber Barnhart, Trent Barnhart, and Donald Barnhart to rezone four parcels at 1413 East Old Church Road from County Ag 1 to County Ag 2. This property is located at the intersection of South Philo Road and East Old Church Road. It was a farm that was subdivided in the early 2000s, that was set aside, part of it was set aside for a nature preserve. The subject properties that were, that are being discussed were kept for green space, farmland, or, or just a general house that exists on the property. The request by the applicant is to rezone the highlighted parcels from Ag 1 to Ag 2 in the county zoning designation system. Concurring with, with that request is a special use permit application for a private indoor recreational development of use, as well as an outdoor commercial recreational enterprise use. The applicant intends to use the farmhouse as, I'm sorry, not the farmhouse, but using a shed. They would plan to renovate it, update it for special events, things such as weddings, banquets, et cetera. And they are needing to rezone the property, because such a use is not permitted in the county's zoning ordinance on Ag 1. So, they would be required to rezone that to Ag 2, so they would be able to apply for the SUP, which allows the event. Those two uses that I mentioned are only allowed with a special use permit, so they need to rezone it to be able to even, to be able to be granted the special use permit. The prop, the subject properties are within a mile and a half radius of the city's borders, are the city's extraterritorial jurisdiction, that allows the city to have protest rights for any rezoning application. The city does not have protest rights for any, for the special use permit of the request, but that is taken into consideration for the overall assessment of the case by staff. The area is designated in the city's comp plan as a future planning area, which is not specifically defined in the city's comp plan, like some of the other designated uses. If the city were to file a protest, it would require the app, the map amendment, the rezoning application, to be approved by the Champaign County Board with a seventy-five percent or three-quarters majority. When the property was subdivided in 2002, several lots were created that were not, that do not conform with the city's subdivision ordinance. The city staff has been working with the applicant, as well as the county staff, to make sure that those issues are taken care of. The county zoning board of appeals, in their case, added a condition for approval of the special use permit, that the, that a subdivision must be approved and accepted with the city of Urbana for the special use permit to be valid. The earliest, I'm sorry, the Champaign County Zoning Board of Appeals recommended for approval both the map amendment, as well as the special use permit, with several conditions, including the one I just mentioned. The earliest that the county would be able to approve that those applications would be at their, the county board would be at their February 23rd meeting. For the meeting of the Urbana Plan Commission, members of the Plan Commission asked about the status of nature preserve, and just it's, whether it could be reverted back to farmland or for development. And staff explained that it is set up to be run as a nature preserve indefinitely, and has several protections. And so, there were questions about the, the subdivision that needed to be, that needed to occur for the parcels to be compliant with the city's subdivision code. And staff presented the, presented how that would be remediated as well. The city's Plan Commission voted with a vote of five to three to recommend to reject, to defeat a resolution of protest with the contingency that the subdivision issues were addressed. As staff concurs with that recommendation, from the staff assessment, the proposed rezoning of Ag 1 to Ag 2 would still keep the rural nature and the rural context of the subject property. I'll just quickly distinguish what the difference is between Ag 1 and Ag 2. Ag 2 is meant to allow for a wider range of, a slight range of commercial uses, such as like a farm supply store, or things such as an event center, but they are still meant to only be uses that would be permitted in a rural atmosphere, things that you would not be out of place in the countryside, or in, you know, a farm area. And also, a lot of those uses are still required to seek special use permits as well. So, from the staff perspective, that the nature of that area would not be changed. It's a viable commercial, commercial use that's compatible with the nearby nature preserve and the nearby farmland. But it's, at the same time, it wouldn't infringe upon future growth patterns within, future growth, potential future growth patterns of the city going southward. The counties, the De La Salca Chair for the county is found in the memorandum. So, the Plan, the Plan Commission's recommendation concurred with, by city staff, is to defeat the resolution of protest with the condition of the subdivision, with a, with the condition of a subdivision being applied for the subject properties. The, one of the applicants is here to, that's available to answer any questions, Ms. Abigail Frank as well.
I support this request, so I'll move to defeat a resolution of protest on the condition that the subdivision process be completed.
Second.
Second.
Lots of seconds.
Could I speak?
That was motion by Marlin, seconded by Jacobson. Go ahead of you, Charlie. Any discussion? Bill?
Yeah, I support this. As far as the subdivision requirements, does that have anything to do with, like, I assume their drive will be gravel, and there's no sense making it not gravel at this point. They're falling up far enough out of town, it doesn't bother anybody to have some dust. So, our requirements wouldn't necessarily make them put in a hard service, or something like that, would it? Is it just a matter of dividing the property?
The subdivision requirements were mainly with the access and the size of, and arrangement of the lots, so.
Okay, thanks.
So, I enthusiastically support this. I think one of the big problems that we have with nature preservation, prairie restoration, is how do you make it economically viable? How do you make it not such a sacrifice on the part of the people who do it? And I think that combining an event center will, I mean, I think it's, it's a great idea. It will expose more people to what is a beautiful area, and it'll provide, you know, resources to maintain that, and maybe it'll motivate other people to do similar things. So, I'm extremely enthusiastic about it, and will enthusiastically vote to reject the protest.
Yes, I would, I'd, I'd point out that this is both agritourism with the event center, and ecotourism with the prairie, and it's, I think, a good solution for keeping a relatively small parcel intact for the family. And this probably was part of a family farm, maybe a larger parcel. So, having, actually being in the very same situation with a number of heirs looking at our family farm, I think this is a great
at our family farm, I think this is a great solution. So, thank you, and it'll balance the wonderful example of agritourism we have on the north end of Urbana, which would be the Prairie Fruits Farm. So, it's nice to see more opportunities like this close to the city.
If I could speak too?
Charlie?
Yeah, exactly. Why would we object to green space? And this is in the spirit of our expanded home business type ordinances. And finally, exactly what Diane said, we support boutique farms and family farming. And if this generates some additional business in that area, a little bit of business for small farmers, I'm all for it. And finally, you know, I've watched this property transform over the past 10 or 20 years, bicycling out there. It's been a gradual process, and it's been wonderful to see. And I've actually gone and walked into the prairie and stuff, and it's very nice to have that close to town. So thank you, and I will support this.
Okay, would the clerk please call the roll? Would the clerk please call the roll?
So these protest votes are always tricky. Vote yes says, does what?
To defeat the protest.
Okay.
We're going to defeat the protests. We're not doing it backwards. We're doing it straightforward. Okay, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
That motion carries.
I have a question.
Aaron has a question.
Something that was brought up earlier, that constituent wanted me to find out, was, I don't know who I would ask this, I didn't know if it was Elizabeth or some other department, what percentage of any particular fine or fee associated with traffic stops do we get as the city? I was, when I, we did this fine and fee structure piece Carol did, and Representative Ammons and Representative Necrits, along with some community organizations. So we were trying to find out how that breaks down and where I would find that.
I think they're talking about state fees?
No, we're talking about city and county fees.
But we have our own ones, right? Okay, here's Elizabeth.
Yeah, probably we ought to sit down and just discuss, so I can understand what you're asking, but it probably, it's different for different fines and fees, so.
Okay, that's fine, thank you.
Okay, there being no further business, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.